This is the sidewalk committee for city council, December ninth, twenty twenty five. So we have an agenda. I think it would be good to, we're gonna start with introductions and then go through our little conflict of interest statements, if there are any. And then we'll get into past project updates, future project recommendations. That would be a pretty casual conversation like we're used to. Hank Duncan will do the presentation and lead us through that. And we kind of do a Q and A as we go, I think, right? And we'll talk with the public. And then we'll see about if we're ready to make recommendations and do a vote on that at the end, or and/or if we need to schedule another meeting. Sound good?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start. Kate Rosenbarger, City Council, District One. Two.
Isabel Piedmont, City Council, District One.
Sydney Solik, City Council, District Six.
Hank Duncan, Metropolitan Transportation.
Neil Kopper, Engineering.
Sophia?
Sophia, Clerk's Office, McDowell.
Go to Andy.
Andy?
Yeah, okay, Andy Ross, Common Council Member at Large.
Kari Bennett, Council Staff.
Christine Chang, Council Staff.
Okay, great. Okay, so then we just wanna do a city council conflict of interest. So this just happens if any project considerations are in anyone's district. We like to just recognize that and say, say whether or not you're able to make an objective decision, even though some projects are in your district. We can also just do it all at once, if you all would like, and just acknowledge that some of these projects are in our districts and we are able to make objective decisions and recommendations here.
I'm fairly certain most and not all of the projects are in District Six. But I believe I can be objective.
Great. Okay, same for me. I am happy to make unbiased, objective decisions today. Isabel?
Yes, I don't think any of these projects are in District One, but in in general, I I view this as a as a whole community issue and not per district. So yes, I I feel like I can make an unbiased decision.
Great, thank you. Andy's at large, so he is good to go. Okay. We're rolling through our agenda.
Unless one of the items is like going by his house or something, I think that.
Yeah, true.
He's not by my house.
He's doing fine, okay. So then I think Hank. Oh, we're doing the next, I'm sorry, my iPad is so old, it's a city iPad, and sometimes it just spins and I have to turn it off and turn it back on. So that's where I am right now. Okay, so the next thing we're doing is actually the renaming of the Sidewalk Committee. I forgot that addition. So sometime in twenty twenty five, council had a deliberation session to talk about the goals of the Sidewalk Committee. And if those goals have stayed the same or changed from finding connections that are missing and building brand new sidewalks, that was like the very limited definition of the Sidewalk Committee, I would say, like ten, eight to ten years ago. Or if it is broader now and talking more about pedestrian safety, which is infrastructure, like also crosswalks and ramps and other fun stuff, right? Like speed humps and everything. So we had that deliberation session with staff, thank you all for coming. And it was decided that it is more of a pedestrian safety committee. And the fund is the Alternative Transportation Fund, which is broader, can't is and can be broader than just sidewalk connections. And so there is a resolution that will be coming to council about renaming the Sidewalk Committee. Isabel is a co-sponsor of that, is that right? And Hopi?
I think so.
Okay, I think so too. And so a draft of that was put in the packet. And I just thought it would be nice if we talked about that a little bit too, to say, to kind of lay the groundwork for what we're looking at this year as our potential projects. And I think too, just to go back to council, even though this will be before council in January, to say the Sidewalk Committee did talk about it and we're happy or not happy with the new description and the new name proposal. So I just thought it'd be kind of nice to talk about it.
This is not the latest draft that in your packet is not the latest draft. So I don't know if staff could project that or.
I'll try to.
Section one has been edited.
Yeah, here's some changes from one of the whereas clauses in section one. Oh, my laptop is not working right now.
Yeah, I do. Um, yeah, I'm I'm a little scared of of trying to do something right now because of our technology issues seem to be spreading. Give me a minute, I think I need to get on on Zoom. Alternatively, I could email it to you, Sophia, and have you project it? No?
No.
Okay.
Just no.
I'll shut down my laptop and then.
Yes, that's where I am as well.
Restart it right now.
Are you not able to share? Sorry, I was.
I'm not in on Zoom yet. I can.
Okay.
I just, I should have done that.
Gotcha.
Have you rejoined us real quick?
I think if you click on the Zoom link and the event, it can just make you.
I'm trying to get it switched from the council to me right now.
It looks like Andy's logged in.
Yeah, it is council.
Okay. I think multiple people can be logged in, at least on our account.
Yeah, I don't have it. My own, I never could figure out how to have my own. So I've always just used the Common Council link. Is that okay, or should I not be doing that?
I think it's alright. It's it's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you know how I can get to my account?
You need to log in right there.
Okay. Sign out, do sign out. Thank you. Can we join to see? It's so cold in here.
It is cold.
The thermostat was on cold. We just turned it up.
Air conditioning?
It was on air conditioning. Cause there's two, people think of only that one, but there's one in the back.
Okay, I don't want now.
I think you have a.
There you go.
Posted over here.
Yep, that's okay.
Why can't I see that? There we go.
You're nailed, right?
I knew we lost Andy. I don't know if it's because.
Because I logged out.
Yeah, so I also locked, just locked in because my computer restarted itself, so.
If he just clicks on the link, he should be able to join just as a participant. I don't know why he would log in as council. So Adam Robson wants to send him a note.
Yeah, he should be able to just log in with his own Google account. I'll send him a quick message.
But then he'll only have it for forty five minutes, is that right? If you're the free one?
No, that's only, that's only for the host.
Oh, did you say that?
Yeah, I don't know why he would lose count.
Yeah, I was not as feeling.
Yeah.
The flash graphic that he figured out how to do that, cause I'm like, I don't know how to do that, that's out.
It's much easier.
Yeah, it's much easier. Lock them anywhere.
I'm sorry that this is taking so long.
Technical issue.
We'll get this.
Computer stuff happens, you know.
Should I let this come out?
Yeah, it's okay. I don't know if that's me or if that's Andy or. Oh, that's me.
I read the packet, that was enough.
Oh, I think I got it.
Yay!
Oh, yeah.
And there's, and there's another common council. Yeah, I think he was.
I think that one's probably Andy, is it? In the waiting room, maybe?
I don't think.
Oh, okay. Let me send.
Andy, are you there?
We're muted.
Oh.
Good gosh.
Oh, there's Andy, okay.
All right.
I don't know what happened. It just, it just went off, I don't know.
It might have been when we were pulling the, getting logged in and pulling things up, but we should be good now.
Okay.
Isabel, do you, are you okay just running through this for the committee?
Sure.
Okay.
So you may have noticed the version that's in your packet also talked about bicycle and micro mobility infrastructure. And Hopi and I thought that we should focus on pedestrians, but in all the facets, not just sidewalks. So so the whereas clause that you see there, the second to last one, just takes out bicycle and micro mobility. Just just to make it more general, the work should include broader consideration of pedestrian safety. And then in section one, we do give a few more examples. So consideration of pedestrian safety, including but not limited to sidewalk installation and improvements, pedestrian access points, traffic calming and other safety improvements. And then the pedestrian safety committee, I think that was in the. Yeah. That was in the one that we had in the packet. So I think, were you gonna co-sponsor it too, Kate?
I didn't, I was ambivalent.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think as a co-sponsor, I wanted feedback, not just like, here it is, you know? So if you all have some tweaking you'd like to suggest, please feel free.
I think it makes sense to separate pedestrian safety from bike infrastructure, if only because like that's very different looking infrastructure and cost too. So I do think it makes a lot of sense, especially given the limited funds that are available to this committee, to to focus specifically on pedestrian, so.
Okay, good.
But that is not to say that I don't want to also prioritize bike infrastructure from a different fund. So I will make that, I will make that clear.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, there are also things that are both, and this fund can still do that, where we don't have sidewalks and things. Staff did look at it and just kind of preferred the pedestrian safety committee name as opposed to the other option. Staff, do you have anything to add now? Okay?
Yay! Andy, have any, Andy, do you have any feedback?
Uh, no, thanks for checking, but yeah, I mean, I guess it makes sense.
Okay. So, I mean, if if we wanted to just like recommend this, if it's, if you think that would be helpful for us, like recommend it to take a vote and recommend it to council, we could do that. But we don't have to, but we can. But if you want to move to vote?
I'll, I'll move that this current sidewalk committee recommends this resolution for approval of the full common council.
Second.
Do we need to vote on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do I call, do I call? Okay. Isabel?
Yes.
Sydney?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kate, yes. Okay, so Sidewalk Committee will recommend four to zero that the Common Council approves this resolution. Great, thank you. So do do do. I guess number three on our agenda, we do have five hundred thousand dollars in the Alternative Transportation Fund to recommend today. This is the same as last year. I think this is our second year at five hundred thousand. Okay. And now Hank, if you would like to see your slides up.
Perfect. Uh, my name is Hank Duncan, Safe Streets Program Manager. I will go over an update of previously approved projects from twenty twenty five Council Sidewalk Committee and go through staff recommend, staff recommendations for the twenty twenty six Council Sidewalk Committee. As always, if you have any questions or comments, don't hesitate to stop me and we can have a discussion. I'd much rather this be a back and forth rather than just a monologue. A quick status report from twenty twenty five sidewalk projects. Going through the list, last year, we allocated three hundred thousand dollars for repaving coordination projects. Essentially, those are projects that we can improve pedestrian safety with while coordinating with Street Department and Public Works when they're resurfacing the street. Those specific sites were bump outs and crosswalk improvements on East Second Street at Dunn, Grant and Lincoln, those three intersections. And those have not been constructed yet. A street had to move the repaving to twenty twenty six. We are still coordinating with them, but that construction will happen this coming year. Along with that, and honestly, because this line item was broad enough to allow some flexibility with repaving options, we were able to install an additional pedestrian refuge island on East Rogers Road by Spice Wood and the Sherwood Oaks Church. That was previously not really thought about at the time of this meeting, but because of this line item and the coordination efforts, we were allowed, we were able to add this in and improve pedestrian safety at this area.
So that's been constructed?
That has been constructed, yes.
Pedestrian island?
Yes.
Sorry, not part of my district anymore.
Absolutely fine. The North Union Street Crosswalk Improvement, this is a raised crosswalk on Union Street between Seventh and Tenth Street. This is connecting the IU campus and some residential buildings over there with a parking lot and other residential building on the east side. And that has not been constructed yet, but that will be constructed in twenty twenty six, correct?
In the summer, while the students aren't there.
Yes. And then the North Jefferson Street Sidewalk. This was prioritized by both the twenty twenty four and the twenty twenty five Council Sidewalk Committees for design and partial construction. We allocated seventy thousand dollars for construction of this sidewalk, knowing that it would not fully fund the construction. The estimated construction cost was three hundred thousand dollars. We actually received bids in the past couple of weeks. We we received lower bids than expected, so the total actual cost will be two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars and change. And because some of the other bids for the repaving came in lower than expected, we were able to allocate more funds towards the Jefferson Street Sidewalk than expected. So we ended up allocating a hundred, about a hundred eighty thousand dollars towards this project, which still does not fully fund the construction, but gets us most of the way there. And I'll talk more about this project later. And then lastly, we touched on the fee lane and law lane intersection improvements last year. This is a safe streets for all high priority intersection. We've received a lot of comments about this and the committee approved design funds for this intersection. After the fact, we learned about a street maintenance project that's happening on this, on this corridor in twenty twenty seven. And honestly, there's more opportunity here than just this single intersection project. So there are ongoing conversations with both Street and Indiana University to partner on a more corridor wide pedestrian focused improvement project, yeah.
Has, how has IU been as a partner for this?
So so far, there's been no formal commitment. Those 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 discussions are still ongoing, but there is interest in partnering with this project. There is still a lot of details to figure out. There are discussions happening over there, but we are hopeful that we can both financially partner in this project.
Thank you.
There is a, there is definitely a shared vision of increased pedestrian comfort and safety on this corridor. We both understand that thousands of pedestrians use this corridor every single day. And just talking about broad scope items that we would like to see, wider sidewalks, better curb, tree plots, et cetera, there is a shared vision for those items.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
So in general, for the, when when the allocation was less than what was actually used? How did that work? Did we have, did we approve like the chair to rearrange the money to match projects?
Yes, so last year and previous years, in this meeting, which we will do this meeting as well, if projects are recommended and approved, we, there is a vote that allows the chair to approve minor changes within this item regarding construction costs, whether they're above or below the estimates.
Yeah, so the chair has approved the Union Street increase, but has not yet approved Jefferson. We haven't formally said, hey, can we put the rest of the money into Jefferson yet?
Yeah, because the Jefferson is more than twice what we allocated. So I wouldn't put that in the category of a minor change.
But I think we knew that that was going to be the case, did we not?
Well, because it was partial construction last year, we sort of put what you all recommended toward potentially the first phase of Jefferson, knowing that we would most likely fund it more in the next year or the next two years.
And I don't think there was a, I think in the approvals last year, I don't think there was like a limit. It didn't, I don't know that it ever said minor. I think it said the chair had approval within the approved projects to shift funding around as appropriate. But I don't think it was like a, within a certain percentage.
Oh.
Any other questions on the twenty twenty five status report? Okay. Twenty twenty six funding recommendations. I will get into a lot more detail about these line items in a second, but broadly, now that we have bids for the Jefferson Street project, we can accurately estimate how how many funds are needed, how much funds are needed to complete this project, and that's about sixty thousand dollars. If approved, this project would be constructed in the summer of twenty twenty six, so very, very soon, we're excited about this project. The Safe Streets Priority Projects, I will go into a lot more detail about this one especially. This is a broad line item to focus on pedestrian centric projects along the Safe Streets for All Priority Network. That is, almost all of the projects that engineering and planning are working on are along this SS4A priority network. We have an adopted city goal, a vision zero by twenty thirty nine. We have an adopted Safe Streets for All Action Plan. And so there is a responsibility of city officials, staff, elected officials included, to focus on this network especially. And these projects will focus on pedestrian specific projects, that being sidewalk gap completion, crosswalk improvement, tree plot construction, et cetera, the things that we've already talked about in this committee, but focused solely on this network.
If you need anything for an official document that totally is wrong, I believe it should be five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Which is, which is okay, I just wanted to point it out in case you needed to make a change.
Thank you, I appreciate it, yeah, good point. And then change orders. This was a request from engineering essentially with previously approved projects in case there are small changes needed in the contract. Say, for example, with the Union Street Crosswalk, if there are small increases in funding needed, this would make it much more efficient and easy for engineering to continue that project without having to slow down.
Staff tells it enough?
It's sort of a placeholder item. Hopefully, it's not needed at all. Sometimes change orders are positive, sometimes they're negative, but just having the item in there and the ability to use it, and then we could go to the chair and say, hey, it was actually six thousand dollars, will you approve, you know, this change? Or we don't need it and we put it into the Safe Streets Priority Project.
Great, thank you.
So in the Safe Streets Priority Projects, I was a little confused about the the maps. So you have the priority corridors map. You have the priority intersections map.
Yes.
Is that for all modes?
That is for all modes, correct.
So I guess I want to just make sure that the funding from this committee goes towards the pedestrian safety aspect and to to ameliorate places where pedestrians are involved in accidents.
No, of course.
Rather than the cars.
Yes.
They're all on the same map, just wanted to clarify.
They are on the same map. I, and we we can narrow it down more specifically if you would like, but looking at any of these corridors on this map, there are absolutely pedestrian challenges and places where pedestrians have been injured or there is a risk of them getting injured. I can't think of a single place along this map where that wouldn't be the case, and that's why we made it as broad as we did, because this is the priority network to improve city streets for all users. But when you're improving safety for pedestrian users, you are often improving safety for other users as well. And so this is the network that doesn't just, we have a high injury network for pedestrians specifically, but that is just the retroactive look on where crashes have happened. This priority network looks at both the high injury networks and the risk, the demographic data of who might be walking or rolling here. And then it incorporates public input as well. So this is the one comprehensive map that we have that we've been moving forward with. But if there needs to be extra verbiage in whatever approval there is that specifies pedestrian projects, we can actually do that, because that is the intent here.
And I assume you would be, to what extent do you just go with the highest rated ones and work your way down? And to what extent is it dependent on like what projects are being considered for other improvements?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question.
Those things considered.
And honestly, that's why I made this line item so broad, because there is a gray area. It is, the answer is it depends, because, and I have a little bit more information on this bullet point here, projects chosen based on efficiency feasibility and SS4A priority. Obviously, we want to hit the highest priority locations first. That is where the most emphasis has happened, that is where the public is saying, I feel unsafe. That said, if it is on, if an area is on the priority network, it is a priority. And if there is an opportunity to coordinate with Street or IU or other stakeholders, or if it's low hanging fruit, then we go into that efficiency aspect of, if we can get a bang for the buck here at this location, maybe we just knock off this location and then move on to others. So again, there's no, there's no perfect science to it, but it is a balance between all of these three things of efficiency feasibility and actual SS4A priority.
What do you mean by efficiency?
That is just coordinating with other stakeholders, that bang for your buck aspect of, say with this fee lane project that I'll get into in a second, if we can coordinate with Street and a maintenance project and IU and their funds, and we can contribute some sidewalk funds as well, that's a bang for your buck rather than doing a sidewalk project solely and then maintenance separately, and then maybe IU wants to do something separately.
Thank you.
What about the, I mean, we're, you know, the city's potentially redoing College Walnut as a major project, like I would not want this going toward a project that is in itself improving safety for all road users. Like I wouldn't want to supplement that because like I think that money should be coming from just like a different budget. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, that's going to happen and it should happen like in the way that is potentially And it should happen like in the way that is potentially planned, right? Like, we have two designs and one will, I guess, potentially get chosen. Like, I don't feel like this, I feel like if this budget were to be used there, we're like losing this budget in a way. Like, it's getting absorbed into a place where it should already just, that product should be funded.
I don't know if I particularly agree with that take, but that's not for me to say. I, I think my opinion would be these, and again, it touching base, touching on the opportunities there on projects that these funds could supplement. There are projects that the city is working on, like East Tenth Street or College and Walnut, or other projects that if there's an opportunity for an extra pedestrian aspect to it that may not be included in the funding, or maybe that, maybe the bids came in higher than we expected, this could be that source of, well, we could add a pedestrian refuge island here with these funds. Or say, and I'll get to this in a second, with the city's SS4A grant application. We don't know if we've been awarded that grant yet, but when we are, there will absolutely be other funding sources used for those grant application projects. But if there are bids that come in higher than expected, or these variables that we might not encounter, or may not intend on encountering, like right of way acquisition or topographical challenges, then these funds could be used to supplement and actually make these projects real and up to the standards, the standards that we'd like.
I could see that with potential extras, but I think something like right of way acquisition, topographical, I mean, that's engineering stuff, right? And like, that's gonna get figured out pretty clearly before the project starts construction, right? I mean, right of way acquisition, we basically know how that's gonna go down.
I think on a, like on a bigger project like College and Walnut, yes, we would. And I think there's a shared intent that on a project like that, like we don't, staff doesn't want to take the council sidewalk money and just lump it into a bigger project already happening, and then it's like you're not getting anything extra. The desire would be, these bigger projects have their own funding sources, like you're saying. And then the council sidewalk funding is going and doing these other kind of standalone things. But there may be a situation where a project doesn't, isn't fully funded, or bids come in high, or we want to add something in, and there's not funding for it unless we can supplement with council sidewalk. I think that's what Hank said. There might be opportunities like that, so he doesn't want to say, no, we're never gonna combine with another project.
Right.
We, that might be the, the best choice.
And I see, I mean, it is like a gray area, and we did talk about this last year with the repaving coordination projects that we didn't want to just be supplementing a project that would happen anyway. And releasing funds for that department to do something else that is not pedestrian related. You all understand that?
Yes.
Yes.
So under what scenario would you use alternative transportation funds for right of way acquisition? Seems like something you need for roads, not for sidewalks.
No, it comes up pretty frequently on sidewalks, especially if there's a brand new sidewalk and there's not a sidewalk there. And you're trying to, you know, you have an existing road, there's no sidewalk, that might be private property where you build that new sidewalk.
That's true. And all that.
South High Street. I stand corrected.
Andy, we can't see you, so do you have anything?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I, I really follow what Kate's saying. I was just a little concerned by, by one thing that I, I believe Hank just said. That with these bigger projects, if it's not this, we might want to be able to dip into this source, this fund, if projects aren't fully funded. That seems to be a little different than saying, well, there may be associated extra additional, additional aspects we might want to add and use to a planned project, a major project. And, and then the funding could come from this. That sounds, seems a little different. I'm a little bit concerned about that statement a minute ago that I thought I heard, it say, well, you know, we want to be able, in case this, a project's not fully funded. In reference to one of the bigger projects. I don't know, maybe I misheard that, but.
Sorry, Andy, just to clarify, I did not mean if a project is not fully funded. This is if a project has another funding source and, say, bids come in higher than expected, or there is an addition that we would like to make to the project, say, based on public feedback. Then that could be an opportunity here. But I am not suggesting if this is a funding source for other projects.
Okay, I just wanted clarification on that, that fully funded, that not fully funded comment that I heard. That's all. And so I, I'm pretty clear. I understand what you're saying, that this would not be used to fund a, a major project that came up short. But it could be used to fund an aspect of a project that was in addition to, to, to increase safety or increase pedestrian friendliness or pedestrian access on top of the overall original project.
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I know that it is hard to think about it as separate when we're saying, we also want to make sure that it gets used in the best ways. Because it be, it does become like all this money kind of like in a bucket together, a little bit, right? That, but you are the Safe Streets Coordinator. And so you just are kind of, in this year, kind of asking, you know, in a way, to like be the steward of these dollars and like decide how they get used, a little more than normal.
Essentially, we don't know fully what opportunities will exist this year yet. Or what feasibility concerns may arise this year, this coming year. It may be that Indiana University doesn't want to commit financially to this fee light project. So I don't want to commit funds from this committee towards a design, towards that project, until we know that there is a commitment on their side. That's just one example. Also, repaving efforts. For twenty twenty seven repaving, we would like to do something similar that we did last year by adding bump outs, or raised crosswalks, or something else to existing repaving projects. So we can get that bang for your buck on the SS4A corridor. But as I'm sure you all know, repaving schedules come and go. And there is a lot of variability there, so we don't fully know exactly which streets will be repaved and when they will be repaved. And how engineering then can coordinate with street when that happens.
Yeah, it makes sense. And I know we're meeting earlier this year. I mean, this was like the original timing of our meetings. Because you want to finish, you're bidding some things out, right, on North Jefferson? Or you're getting, and that is for January potentially, and so we're here now. And so then, because we're here now, we don't know about the Safe Streets grants yet.
And so I, I did want to go into a few specific projects that, that these funds could be used for.
That'd be great.
Again, this is not all inclusive by any means, but just giving a little bit more insight into what projects were included in the Safe Streets For All Grant application, to give you some idea. So for one, and we've talked about this project before, South Walnut Street Pike. This is on the priority corridor, or on the priority network. There are intersections that are on the priority intersection network. And there was recently, in the past year or two, I believe, fatal or severe injury crash. So.
Fatal.
It was fatal. There are areas on here that do not have a complete sidewalk network. There are intersections on here that could absolutely be improved to assist pedestrians better when crossing. North Kinzer Pike, the city's just began a corridor study on this entire Kinzer-Madison-Rodgers corridor. But on this corridor, there are sidewalk gaps that absolutely need to be filled. There are intersections like Gorley Pike or Bruckdale that do not have crosswalks up to the standards that we would like as a city that could easily be improved. So those are just a couple of examples in this grant application that we applied for. But if we don't get this grant, or even if we do, these ones could be used to assist in those projects in some way or another.
Is that near Kinzer Flats?
I'm not sure where Kinzer Flats is.
It's like a block south of Seven, of the bypass.
Yeah, so that's, I think that, that building in the lower right corner is Kinzer Flats.
Okay.
And that would generate a lot of pedestrians.
And then not mid.
It's interesting that, sorry.
No, 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 you're fine. Go ahead.
This is a highest priority corridor, but South Walnut Street Pike is only medium, right?
I will say.
Probably the number of pedestrians.
I imagine that Kinzer Pike, especially at this area of Gorley Pike, is at the highest core, is at the highest priority level because of the bypass. Because of the intersection with the bypass and the FSI's that have happened at that particular intersection.
Yes, that is Kinzer Flats. Thank you.
Because the bypass intersection is pretty bad, right?
Yes.
Mostly for cars or pedestrians?
For both.
Everyone.
Everybody.
Yes.
Okay.
Bypass takes its victim.
Can we do anything at that intersection, or is, I mean, it's state owned, right?
At a state owned, I am aware, Neil can probably talk about this more, but I'm aware that there has been some coordination between city and NDOT at that intersection.
We've talked, but it's state owned.
Because I remember the Mark Skosberg data says that's a pretty horrible space to get across.
I will also add, Isabel, you're talking about medium load versus highest priority. There is a gray area in terms of what, where the separations are in the level of priority here. And so there is some level difference, but quite honestly, if it is on the priority list, it is a priority. So it goes back to then efficiency and feasibility. If there is a project that we can do at any of these locations, regardless of level of priority, we would like to do it.
Ah, and that intersection doesn't have a prior, the State Road forty five, forty six and North Kinzer has a blue dot, so it's not on the priority list because it's an NDOT jurisdiction.
Yes, that is, that is simply saying, if it were a city intersection, it would be a priority intersection. But because it is an NDOT intersection, it's blue. That is, yeah.
Gotcha. So for anyone watching, call your legislators.
But, um, but I mean, the pri, the, the prioritization does mean something.
Yes, absolutely does. But I don't want to discount the level of priority that Walnut Street Pike has.
Well.
Yeah, that one's yellow.
And, and orange.
And then a bit more on the fee lane project. I've already touched on this a good amount, but some more detail. Originally, we had talked about the fee and law intersection specifically. The, uh, street is planning on repaving this corridor from Tenth to Seventeenth in twenty twenty seven. And along with that, replacing some curb on the sidewalk across parts of the corridor. And so that was what spurred this discussion of, well, if there's already concrete work going on, what else can or should we do that helps with the efficiency of something here? And then that spurred along the conversations with IU, saying, hey, this might happen. We have this vision for the corridor that might include tree plots, a wider sidewalk, better crosswalks here. What do you think? How can we work together on this? And that's where we, where we are right now in the discussions.
Does IU own any of those streets?
IU owns Law Lane. And then if we were to build a tree plot and widen the sidewalk, we would almost definitely get into IU property. And that's especially where that partnership could come, come into.
This is the intersection that has a bus stop right across the street from Briscoe that students have quite a long ways to walk before they hit an intersection that would allow them to cross.
Yes, the picture, the picture on the right there is up by the Briscoe Quad, about a few hundred feet south of Seventeenth Street. And we've been aware of this, of this area, and there have been student groups who have reached out advocating for a better crosswalk here.
Wonderful.
What about, um, the intersection of Seventeenth Street and Eagleson?
Yeah, that's, that has been an ongoing discussion as well, absolutely.
High risk, for sure.
Neil might be able to talk more about that, especially for the short term items. I know Kendall was the project manager on that, but I don't know if you have anything to add.
So that intersection was originally, it was part of one of our prioritized intersections in a federally funded project, which have very long timelines on them. So we're looking at construction in like twenty twenty nine or something like that for the project. So we have, we are moving forward with a short term implementation to use temporary materials to install a pedestrian refuge island at that intersection.
Has it been considered for signalization?
It has been considered. I'll say, at this point, we're not moving forward with signalization, but it's part of the discussion.
Thank you. That was kind of a tangent. How do we let the change.org organizers know that things are being done to Seventeenth and Eagleson?
That's exactly what I was thinking.
I would say as a representative of a lot of IU students, that is something that you absolutely could do.
Okay, fabulous. Great.
It is, it's kind of murky over there for sure. Okay, so more question. Andy, anything? What are, what, Isabel, Sandy, Andy, what are you all thinking about this kind of new approach? Not super new, you know, but following Safe Streets For All Priority projects. And, um.
What, what, what is it really changed in practical terms compared to what we would have done before viewing it without the Safe Streets?
I say it gives a little more flexibility to staff to fund priority projects as they present themselves. And to get some things a little more shovel ready that are, seem to be in the pipeline, like the ones you are talking about here as potentials. I think it takes away some administrative work, I guess, that engineering and planning have to talk with the chair a lot if things are different. So I think it gives flexibility and more of a go ahead for you all to just get going on those projects. I think just, I answered that question, but I think for me, I'm leaning toward like, let's try it, see what happens, you know? I think last year was actually pretty great with the repaving coordination. I mean, I know we didn't use all that money, but there were some, I think the bump outs in some of those intersections are wonderful, you know? It like totally changes the crossing length for pedestrians, and I think that is just wonderful. And to just get it, get it done as it comes. So I guess I'm leaning toward just doing this with, you know, Hank and Neil, and especially Hank, you know, like understanding the description of the committee and the goals and, yeah, just moving forward like this.
I agree. I think given the timeline and just how many things need to be approved by next year, I do think it makes sense to go ahead and, and allow that leeway.
Is there any need, does anybody think, to engage the full council on this or?
Well, they have to vote on it anyway.
Yeah, we would, a report back to council and then council would take their official vote.
I believe. We just recommend.
Okay.
So we would, I mean, that's a good question, Andy. So we would be potentially recommending this, and then we would go to council and I would do a report out on this meeting. And we would say our recommendations, and then we would all discuss it and have a public comment on it before a vote.
Yes, and is that up, on this upcoming December seventeenth meeting?
Not yet.
Okay.
We'll have to talk about getting the report ready.
Gotcha.
We'll have to talk about getting the report ready. Sorry, I was whispering that, but I don't need to whisper.
January thing anyway.
Yes, okay.
So I have, I have a question about the timing. So for the North Jefferson Street sidewalk, in your memo, you said that it's going to Public Works, December, the Board of Public Works on December sixteenth.
We'll award the construction contract on that day, and then we will encumber all the available twenty twenty five funding with approval from the chair. And then that's enough for us to open a purchase order, award the contract. And then that's enough for us to open a purchase order, award the contract with partial funding, and they won't be starting construction in December. You know, they're gonna construct at some point. They could actually do concrete work over the winter. So as early as possible in 2026, we'd like to open the remainder of the funds, knowing that they're not actually gonna spend enough to need that little bit until they get further along in the project.
But you're going to start a project before the full funding is approved?
Which is fairly common, right?
We would be doing that, knowing that we have department funding that we would, we would kind of, I don't know if we would actually open a purchase order, but we would set it aside as a, we have the full funding. We can, we can say we have it all, but the intent isn't to use that funding. The intent is to use the remainder of the council sidewalk.
Okay, I understand. Well, I think that overall, this kind of begs the question of the purpose of this committee. I mean, if we have $500,000 and we're giving, what, 80% of it to a big bucket of things? It's like, do you really need us anymore? That's what comes to my mind.
Which has kind of been a question for a long time, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's one of the reasons we had the deliberation session. But, or Anne, some council members really like having this committee and didn't see a reason yet to give it up, I think. Yeah.
I would ask for a, a mid-year report from staff just to let us know how, what projects are, um, being funded with the money that we allocate, if the council agrees to allocate it. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, definitely.
Something similar, I think, to just this before council, the, the two charts.
Yeah.
With some images.
I can absolutely do something, say June. Is that fair?
We go on recess, but early June could work.
Early June, okay.
Actually, early, yeah, or because things get hairy after we get back.
Okay.
I would say June, just, just because when we get back, everyone's gonna be on budget. So like, y'all might not have time either, so.
And it might just depend on funding timing for the Safe Streets grants. And if there is anything to report yet, really, um, yes.
Okay, I have a hard stop at one.
Okay.
Just to let everyone know.
If, any more discussion from committee members? If not, we could entertain a motion to recommend, to vote to recommend?
Yes, I move.
Oh, public comment, yes, okay. Laura, thank you so much. I didn't have the agenda right here. Let's open it up to public comments. So if anyone is on Zoom, I don't think there's anyone here in person. Public, okay. So just raise your hand on Zoom if you would like to talk. Okay, looks like no one.
In that case, I move the recommendation for the 2026 funding allocation to be recommended to the full comment council.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I will call, call Andy.
Yes.
Sydney?
Yes.
Isabel?
Yes.
Kate, yes. So we will recommend this funding, $60,000 for Jeffre, North Jefferson, $435 for Safe Streets for All Priority Projects. We'll have a discussion on that at our council meeting.
Two things before we adjourn.
Yeah.
And I think you're on it.
You, yes, wanted to, um, and we might not need it as much this time, right? But, okay. We need to also approve the prioritization of projects in that list.
So within the approved project list, so we have three, North Jefferson Street Sidewalk, Safe Street Priority Projects and Change Orders. Approving a priority list of those three projects, I would recommend doing it in order of the list of Jefferson 1, Safe Street 2, Change Order 3, in case there are funding changes that are needed. Does that, that align with, with your needs?
I think, yeah, I think that's fine. And then, I don't know if that relates to the chair being able to approve any changes.
So we, I, I think, yes, Neil, I think that's right. We could just tackle both those at once. But I think we would like to vote on prioritizing the list in that order and then giving the chair, uh, the, um, approval to work with staff if funds need to be allocated a little differently. And so that would mostly.
Among the three.
Among the three, among the three, yes.
So.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I will call Sydney.
Yes.
Isabel?
Yes.
Kate, yes. Andy?
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, we are adjourned.